Good. All right, we can call it over the January fifteenth meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll do a roll call.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. McCullough? Mr. Arden?
Here.
Mr. McCall?
Yeah.
All right, now we need to swear in our new member.
Hey, that I will take that part over. Do you really like to stand up and raise your right hand? I state your name.
I Nick McCullough.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I shall faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
I shall faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Discharge the duties of the member of the.
For the Village of Plain City, Ohio.
For the Village of Plain City, Ohio.
For the term ending.
For the term ending.
January twenty-third, twenty thirty.
January twenty-third, twenty thirty.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Congratulations. Yes, fine, and then.
You just gave up quite a few years.
I know.
I don't remember having to do it.
He has a down more, right? Thank you.
Should I tell you that you gotta buy everybody down in the first two, three years?
All right, where we're going.
All right. Next thing we'll do is a motion to appoint the Chair for twenty twenty-five.
I, I volunteer to lead as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Or I nominate myself, I guess.
So I, I can make a motion then. Okay, there we go, we got the motion, second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Arden?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
So now you take it over, do I gotta do the Vice Chair?
No, I will, I will take it on. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair? I'll nominate Diana.
I'll second.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Arden?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Moving into approval of the minutes from our November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November twentieth meeting?
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
I'll say.
Minutes are approved. Moving into our communication portion of the meeting, Planning and Zoning update for Mr. Hutchinson.
Well, Happy New Years, everyone. Due to our agenda's kinda full tonight, so I was gonna do recap of the stats for twenty twenty-four. I'll stay up to next month, give everyone a rundown on all of our stats from last year. So just to keep this, keep this party going, I'm gonna pass my on to Paul is running late, so his solicitor. He will do some communication later on, we'll do it in the discussion items, so.
Um, we, there was no applications last month, and at this time, we have no applications for next month.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy, and we do have an opening, because Mr. McCullough joined us from BZA. So we do have an opening on our Board of Zoning Appeals. If anybody is interested in applying to serve on that committee. Which brings up to our point, you are serving as our liaison to BZA as well. This is a time that if you wanted to make a choice, like if we wanted to keep you as the crossover, if you wanted to. E- either one of you sent, could serve as the crossover, is what I.
You've been doing a great job, I promise.
And we can keep, continue, okay, perfect. All right, moving into the council update, we had our council meeting on Monday evening. Some of the items in our discussion that we discussed. At this meeting was adult use cannabis extending our moratorium. Council discussed to extend it for one more year to gather more information. Under speed vehicles, that was a discussion topic to create in our code. Verbage for twenty-five miles per hour for and below vehicles to give more guidance on that section. Just ODOT updates of different things that we have to approve in the village. To allow them to repair bridges and apply snow removal and salt. So that was discussed to go forward with, and we did a committee, commission, and board overview. In that, we talked about planning and zoning. We just. You put you on for twenty thirty, council feels like that is a long time to ask a citizen and resident. Volunteer to serve, so we are going to start the process. It'll have to start here with planning and zoning, but to make them three-year terms. So it's a little bit more attainable for someone's schedule instead of saying you're on for six, six years. So that was one of the items that we are working on. Also, smoking in public places, that would be like pastime park or future parks. Putting in some. Verbage in our ordinances about not permitting smoking. In the village-owned areas, and then also aquatic center rate update. We have been very. We are much lower than a lot of surrounding communities, and with the, the pool, with the community getting more growth. And our pool is still the same size as it was twelve years ago, looking at raising the rates. And for our non-residents, and even doing a day rate change for non-residents. So that it can help kind of maybe deter some of the people that are coming into our pool. And so giving more benefit to our residents and making sure that they feel that they can visit our pool. And not feel like they're a sardine in a can. So Parks and Rec was put forth rates, and council will be, had a first reading on that. So those are some of the things that are happening in, in our council meetings. So with that, I will. Finalize my report and move into public comment. Did anybody sign in for a public comment this evening? That is not related to zoning applications. So if anybody has anything. Okay. Moving out of our public comment into old business, PUD twenty-four dash seven preliminary development plan, Creekview Commerce Park. Applicant Gary Smith with G two Planning.
So now I'll start this one off. So this was in November, we did the rezoning and preliminary plan for that. The preliminary, the zoning was approved, and we tabled the preliminary plan. So at this time, we're going to revisit that. The applicant did supplies, and everyone have that in their package, their comment letter. With their changes that they recommended, and a little more description on their reasons for what they have proposed. Staff is still in support of this project, to be approved. So at this point, if anybody has questions, we have the applicants that are here tonight, if you have any to answer any questions.
And we are making a recommendation. That is, that's why, we're not, we are making it if, if we approve or disapprove of this. It ultimately goes on to council, so just giving some clarification there. Anybody have any questions?
Good evening, Gary Smith, seven-one, I'm sorry, seven-twenty East Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio. It's great to see you guys again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. Hope you're staying, staying somewhat warm. We did, we had a great, I think we had a great meeting, the last time we were here in November. We did, we got a lot of questions, had a lot of thoughtful discussion. We took, you know, we went back, took a look at it, sat down with staff, had some further discussions. And made some changes, primarily to the development text in response to some of the concerns that we had expressed. And we did put together kind of a comment letter, how we were gonna respond, and then, you know, issued those changes to Derek in that comment letter back in December. So we're here to answer any questions that you have, I'll be happy to kind of go through anything again if you want us to. I've got, you know, everything here with me tonight, so we're just here kind of at the pleasure of the board. Or at the pleasure of the commission to, you know, help whenever we can answer questions.
In regards to the signs, I know they don't meet sign code. So if we approve it here, it doesn't, like what, because. If we say the yes to this, they don't have to go through something, it doesn't have to meet the sign.
Well, they still have to do zoning permits, but in, in their zoning text though, is, they're stating in the zoning text what those signs that they're proposing. So they couldn't be greater than that, but from their zoning text, that's what they're proposing.
And these signs would not meet the code, right? Because when I looked back at it, didn't look like the ten-foot monument sign would.
The ten-foot is taller, now if this was, now on the forty-two corridor, it is, what is it? Eleven feet is the max along forty-two. So on the interior streets, it would be eight. Six feet, so if any of the monument signs along the interior corridor are taller than that, there's only text with.
I don't have any questions, I think that it was all addressed appropriately, and. I felt comfortable with the response.
One thing I did remember, what was the, when it comes to the landscaping, the emergence, what's the reasoning behind it, or what's?
The. We have a buffer, just the, the buffer that we've designed is different than what's outlined in the code. I think the buffer that we have established in our project is actually more stringent than what the code requires. I'm just looking at, looking at the divergences now. Yeah, so we, we established for this development, specific landscape requirements. That we want to have govern this development. And we wanna make sure that future users in this development have to go to this text rather than the landscapes code. Because we've, we've set out some, and established some different standards in here that we want those folks to abide by.
Mr. Farthing, can you go ahead and scroll to those? The standards they're recommending for landscaping, is it, you outlined it in this letter?
Well, it's in the text, and it, but it's also in the, it's also in the drawings. So all of the drawings kind of outline what the buffers are required in terms of the bounding. Yeah, for some of the perimeter buffers, we have some pretty tall bounding requirements, six to eight feet.
Six to eight, okay.
Yeah, and then, you know, we have a mixture of trees, so evergreens. Deciduous shade trees and ornamental trees, because we wanna create, you know, something that looks more natural. And with a little bit more variety than if you just kind of staggered a, a bunch of evergreens along one long line. That never really looks natural, it looks, always looks out of place. So we wanted to establish something that would feel a little bit more natural, that would require higher, taller mounds, those kind of things. We're still requiring street trees on the internal streets, we're still requiring interior landscaping around the buildings, all of those things. But we do have some more stringent requirement on.
And you will have to go before our tree commission to have the plans and.
Well, they'll, yeah, they'll review, they'll review them to make suggestions for tree species or whatever at that point. Just to, just to make sure the environment will look.
And I, and I believe the individual users will have to come back for final development plan, all so.
Yes, individual.
So it'll be, yeah, it'll be back in front of this commission when an individual use comes in and says, okay, here are the, here's the landscaping that we're providing. You know, and here's what the facility's gonna look like, all those things. So you, you guys will get to review it again before it actually gets brought.
Just like, just like the spot where we have to. Whatever gives or comes in, you have to.
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't have any further questions. With that, I will move to approve PUD, recommend to approve PUD twenty-four dash seven preliminary development plan, Creekview Commerce Park. A second.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
No.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Motion is a, PUD twenty-four dash seven is approved as a recommend, recommended to approve to council. Moving into new business. CP dash twenty-four dash four, concept plan, Valentine Property, zero US forty-two, parcel eighteen dash zero 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 one one seven three. Applicant Dwight McCabe with McCabe Companies.
So what we have here tonight is known around here as the Valentine Property. So this is north forty-two on the west side, this is kind of the last, on the west side, it's the last parcel within the village limits on the west side of forty-two. And so this is the concept, let's get, so those are the new to the board concepts. This is just an idea, this isn't approval, there's no voting on this tonight. This is just the starting discussion of what's being proposed at, at this site. So at this point, we generate questions, concerns, suggestions, anything like that, kind of gearing this up, ready for the preliminary plan. So once they do that here, they also will do this at council as well. So tonight, we do have Mr. McCabe here with us. Would you like to step up and tell us a little bit about the project?
You bet, thank you. Dwight McCabe, address seven-three-six-one Prairie Road, Plain City. So I'd kind of like to walk you through a little bit of history of this property in particular, because this piece of property actually has had quite a. A storyline with the broader development of Plain City. And just wanted other folks to kind of understand that and, and understand why we're really here today. So there was an original tract of land that was owned by the Rickert family years ago, and, and a fellow by the name of Mitchell bought it, Don Mitchell bought it. So there was a hundred and forty acres, the plan that's in front of you shows the boundary of what that hundred and forty acres was. And back, way back in nineteen ninety-six, when, when the Rickerts still owned it, they actually sold the property where the, the fire station is. So that was kind of a start of that, and then in nineteen ninety-eight, Wayne Ballantyne purchased the hundred and forty acres. In two thousand and four, Wayne came to Plain City and, and had discussions with ODNR. About the property that you see on that, that map up there, that's now owned by the city of Plain City. And the purpose of that was twofold. One was, ODOT was looking to put the bypass in, forty-two bypass. And there's some environmental requirements that have to do with improving roadways and set asides. And so that was going to take care of some of those offsets. And the rest of it was that Wayne felt compelled to go ahead and give all that land to the city and put it into a conservation easement. And, which is not uncommon, we do this all the time, large tracts of land, set aside some permanent green space. The timing of it was such that he wasn't ready to go vertical with development, but he wanted to have this. This tract of land set aside. And so what was done was a, there was an MOU done between the city and High Department Natural Resources. And the, and Wayne to actually get it in the hands of the city sooner than later. So instead of doing after development, it was done before development. And so what was memorialized is that land counts against the green space requirement for the overall development. And so there was a MOU signed with city and ODNR and Valentine in two thousand and four to do just that. Then, the conveyance of the right of way happened to ODOT, the bypass got constructed, and that was in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And the actual, the actual conservation piece, the overlay easement was done in two thousand and six. And then in two thousand and seven, that land was conveyed to the city of Plain City. There are also, to clean up a little bit loose end, we've been, we've been working with surveyors, trying to figure some things out. You're gonna see on the next plan, I'll point out when we get to it, there's a, there's a little triangle piece of land that's up against the park on the east side of forty-two. That's part of that fourteen acres. There's always been question about whether that was Plain City land, whether that was Valentine land. The auditor's site is not really correct on that either. And come to find out, just a couple of days ago, we actually found that there was a deed given back to Valentine from Plain City. That memorializes that, so it actually is a part, so that fourteen acres is actually slightly bigger than what the fourteen acres is. And so we get all the way up here to two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, and we got introduced to Wayne and started talking about. You know, what his thoughts are, what his long-term view of this property was. While meantime, he also sold the property to the diocese where the Catholic church facility is. So, so here we are before you, really at the behest of, of Wayne. Will be involved from a more vertical development point of view with the project as well. But we kind of feel like we're here representing Wayne's interest from many years ago, when he took an investment here in Plain City and started working with the city. So, we could move maybe to the next slide. So I guess the next place to go is two thousand and eighteen, so that's when the comprehensive plan for Plain City was updated. We actually had some involvement in that plan, because it happened to be about the time we started talking about our project that we just finished up here in town. On South Chili Cote Street, Hamlet on Darby. And so, you know, I, I'm actually a, a prodigal son of Plain City. Grew up here, went to school here. Graduated and kind of spent the rest of my life all over the United States doing other things. And, and what's now turning out, been quite a while ago, actually, we found a place to move back to Plain City, halfway to your, your Plain City, Dublin. And then, I'm a late bloomer, so I had my first daughter when I was fifty. And so my daughter's a sophomore in high school here, my son's in seventh grade, and so now we are very much back part of the community. And have had plenty of reason to be drawn in and use what our skill sets are in real estate development, construction, things we've always done. So when the plan was being revisited in, in two thousand and eighteen. Turns out, your team, MKSK that was involved in that, those are folks we know really well. And we always are constantly talking about through our industry, back and forth, all the various communities and their plans and what their thoughts are. And so is this plan involved with you all? It had been a long time since the comp plan had been looked at in Plain City. There's certain spots around town that, given the dynamics of the time, given the players at the time. There were kind of different thoughts on what a few areas may or may not be. And this was one, this was one where there were about an equal number of folks that looked at these tracts of land and said, hey, that's. There is a place for economic development, there's a place for commercial, industrial, those types of things. And there's others that looked at it and said, you know, our biggest asset in Plain City is our park, frankly. And the other asset we have is Darby Creek, and kind of the aspects of that. And here, you have sandwiched between those two, a piece of property that could be a lot more than just industrial, commercial, and kind of a harsh edge. Particularly given that it's, it really is a front door to Plain City coming from the north. And so there was a lot of consternation at that time. So, so as we've approached this with staff, kind of revisiting and rethinking what this. What would be best suited here for the community. This is the beginning of a plan of what feels to be a little more appropriate for what might be here. So, instead of being a really rigid zoning that says it's an industrial commercial. Where it could start to feel a little bit like what you see on, on industrial Parkway. And frankly, given the project that you just passed before us. That's a far superior place to actually think about those kinds of uses. Because it's kind of a half-step removed from the neighborhood aspect of Plain City. It's, it's certainly not competing with the natural elements that are here, and what happens with the parkland. So with those cues, we started looking at it and said, okay, what does Plain City need? And in particular, what does this location provide opportunity for? And what, the one thing we saw is a real need in Plain City for local services. So where do you put the next daycare, where do you put the pediatrician, where do you put the dentist, where do you put those kinds of uses? And, and if you look, where there certainly is plenty of traffic heading eastbound out of Plain City on one sixty-one, there aren't great places for that. There's better uses, better things happening out there. And then you're, there are like, just like here, on the south edge going down forty-two, there's certainly spots for those kinds of things, that's why they're here. But similarly, you have that going north. Now, a, a personal bias for me is, you know, back in the seventies, when big boxes and retail and fast food restaurants and all those things were really going like crazy. And, you know, we're as guilty as any, we built a lot of those, didn't develop them, didn't create them, we were contracted in those days. They used to pain us when we'd go to cities all over the United States, and you have these corridors of nothing but commercial. You know, to me, it's like Romillyard Road is like the worst of the worst. It's, that isn't how we feel comfortable in a community. It, it just is so foreign to what we think a community should be. So in looking at this, you could do exactly that here, that's not anything we'd have an interest in. So the way we looked at it, it said, there's frontage there, it's Route forty-two today, it runs a little higher speed limit. As soon as you develop out there, it's gonna drop back to a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, so that issue kind of goes away. But the nature of the uses, we don't see, this is fast food heaven, we don't see this a place where drive-throughs are gonna be. We see this as, again, where, where should young kids be going to a daycare? We actually have two or three daycare folks, best in central Ohio, they're dying to be here. We have, again, we have pediatrician ones here, we have dentist ones here, those kind of folks, they're kind of close to home services that. There's some limited capacity here, but as Plain City, just based on what's already been approved, more of those things need to be here. And so we felt real good about the frontage of this area, taking that on. So that puts it up against a high visibility Route forty-two, you got the bike, the pass-by traffic that had made those really viable sites. Then, this site actually is a pretty big site, it's, it's forty-some acres over there, when you look at that, start thinking about how do you break that up into other uses? And again, we see this not as a singular zoning, we see this as a mixed-use location. We started reacting to who started coming out of the woodwork to us. Well, the assisted living folks see Plain City being grossly underserved. We saw certainly a transition between, you know, empty nesters and your single mom, and all those folks needing a place. That's what we did at the Hamlet on Darby, but there's the next step. When they have to leave that, and we, we're actually seeing a lot of turnover already just because of that. Those have to go on from this to the next, where do they go? And Plain City really only has one facility like that, out on the far west side of town, it's not very big. So, there's a number of really quality providers who would love to have a location here, this feels great for that. The, the really unique thing about this piece of property is it's not adjacent to any residential neighborhood, and it never will be. And so when you think about the mix of uses, and you think about things that maybe don't play well together. A lot of those concerns don't happen here, so some of these uses. So some of these uses that will be productive for Plain City and the growth of Plain City can be here without having to interfere with kind of those adjacency issues that you guys deal with all the time. The other aspect of this, kind of our broader view, again, we started working on the Hamlet project. We also engaged with Metro Parks in a big way. And if that lots of dialogue, you know, your, your parks people have as well, about the idea of ultimately having a corridor that runs all the way along Darby Creek. So from the southeast side of town, all the way across the north and across the back of this. And ultimately look at Metro Parks coming and picking that up. That'd be a fantastic linear park along Darby Creek and a bike trail. It gets all those folks that come off the Heritage Trail, want to go to Dredachman without getting on the public roads. All of those things are out ahead of this project and others that will run on Darby Creek. So this feels like a good terminus point for that. And with a little creativity, you probably could get all the way to Dredachman. So I think that kind of sets the stage for why are we here and what are we asking? So we would like to, to ask for, looking at this, instead of a static zoning turned into a PUD. So it's more of a cooperative relationship on what type of uses are here, defining and limiting what those uses may be. And I kind of mentioned pretty much the ones that we've so far been getting a lot of attention over. So that's our primary objective. Now, I want to hit on one thing in particular. So you see there's multifamily on this plan. So maybe flip to the next sheet. And that's always a, that type of use that needs further discussion. So kind of how we see the balance in the development of Plain City and really lots of communities that we've spent a lot of time in and been involved with. There's, as a community building thing, zoning is one thing. Creating places for people that are kind of at various stages in their lifecycle is a very different thing. And so, and in particularly in today's world where, you know, it used to be maybe you could find folks to stretch a little bit. You could find some kind of second, third generation housing that was the right price and somebody of a younger age could afford their way into it. That's not the world we live in anymore. So you really have to look at, ask yourself to have a complete community and ha, and, you know, what do you do? I mean, I think about my own kids. They're going to graduate here soon. Hey, they're probably going to college. But after they get done with college, then what? How do they come back to this community or kids that are at the technical school? How do they go to work, you know, soon after they graduate? And have a place to live in the community other than their own parents' house? So you've got to think about that. Where do those people go that have been contributors to your community? And they want to remain here and you want them to remain here. You also have lots of young couples. Where do they go? I mean, how many young couples today can go out and buy a house the day after they're married? It doesn't happen. They need quality places to live. You've got longtime singles who are actually, when we're talking to staff here, there's actually quite a few people in this building who are renters. You know, they have careers, they've got good jobs and they're, they're single and they decide this what, this, that's how they want to put a roof over their head. You've got families in transition. This community, there's a lot of people building houses here. You've already approved a lot of houses to come. There's plenty of those folks that got to sell their house first, wait for the new house to get built, where do they live? We've seen lots of those folks. You see those people coming to the Hamlet and Darby. We expected some of that. But we also see a lot of those people who are living in Dublin and Hilliard and have to work out things with the school districts and the kids can get here. And, you know, it's, 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 it's tough. And then you've got aging individuals who, you know, they're just, they're just not going to be in a single family house anymore. And everybody has a different way of thinking about how they want to live and what kind of environment and how they want to associate with people. You also really need to think about, again, you just approved a 500 acre commercial industrial property. How do you support that? How do you actually turn that into reality and reap the benefits that that kind of commercial use brings to a community? Where you have to have a place for the workforce. So you've got to think about kind of the age group of the workforce. Who are the folks that, you know, we need, need to show up and be a part of that? And you have to have a housing stock for those folks. You also really kind of want to look at your broader community and say, where are things maybe falling short? And I, I throw this out here, I hadn't thought of this at all, but it came to me. We can have a conversation with some folks. Look at your religious congregations in town, what's happening? So you've got a growing population. You actually have a severely decreasing participation in those churches. Why is that? The why is because the youth who are now moving into young adulthood don't have a place to live here. They're leaving. So they're not joining those kinds of institutions. And so just in particular, I grew up here, I'm president of church. And, you know, we had five, 600 members when I was a kid. We had a great youth group. We had just tons of people. You know, you'd be setting up chairs in the aisles. My understanding is they get about 30 people in a service a week now. And they just lost their minister. The Catholic Church is struggling with attendance. Isn't a, isn't a, any discussion about religion. This is just about understanding the dynamics that occur when you don't have a full complement lifecycle housing. You know, if we had everybody in Plain City stand up and say, how many people have lived in an apartment in their life? Virtually everybody raises their hand. So you have to be careful about who are we talking about? Who are the folks that would be living in these, in these environments? And so it's more, it should be more of a discussion about the timing, the amount. You know, here, nobody's going to build a project that this may just day one. That's not going to happen. It's not intended to happen. It really needs to be in balance with the rest of the development that occurs within a community that's growing like this. And, and what, what we'd like to do, you know, we really want the feedback from today. We'd like to then have a session with council and talk about, we've got some, you know, some other financing things that we're getting into here. But also to kind of close the loop on the mathematics and the, you know, the real matters related to single family houses versus multifamily housing. There's a lot to talk about there and we're very prepared to do that. But there's a real thing that, and Mayor, I know we've had this conversation a number of times. Having done real estate development, really all over the United States and a lot of places in central Ohio. And in particular, we have a large project underway in Hilliard. Plain City has been blessed, Jonathan Oliver School District's been blessed with very low taxes. Just paid my taxes again today. Very low taxes and yet we have fantastic schools. And you have to ask yourself why that is. And I've spent time with superintendent treasurer and, and we've had these discussions. The why that is, is because Jonathan Oliver School District has only about 30% of the households with school-aged kids in them. So 70% of the households in this district are paying into property tax that goes to schools. And, and there's no kids to service. Which is why Plain City also doesn't have a ton of income, real estate tax income from commercial development. So it's, it's the antithesis of a lot of communities where they push and push and push to get the commercial and industrial and all that. Because that's what they think is going to bolster what the schools need. Well, the reality of that is it's a competitive environment. How do you get new commercial, industrial office development? You have to give tax a payment. So immediately 15 years upfront, nobody gets anything. And yet it brings people to your community who have school-aged kids. So what happens particularly in that first 15 years of moving towards a commercial base of real estate tax base, it's just the opposite happens. And then Hilliard's a classic example. So they did that years ago. Some of the first tax payments in Ohio happened in Hilliard. And so then you fast forward, now you're bringing in all the folks in the single family houses. And here it's like the biggest bedroom community in central Ohio. They're also the highest tax rate in central Ohio. So you've got to use the lesson learned of what happened in that community and other communities in central Ohio and say, hmm, how can we balance between households that don't have school-aged kids and revenue generated from your real estate tax point of view? The interesting thing about multifamily is it is the highest value per acre of anything you can build on piece of property. And it's taxed at a commercial rate. So when you take that all into consideration, to put a office building on a site like this that has acres and acres of parking to fill an office space, and you look at the actual resultant from that, you're going in the opposite direction from the fact that you can just work with this formula of balancing the housing stock, which yet it solves a lot of your growth needs for your lifecycle of folks that live in the community. That's the underlying benefit, but the reality is the mathematics actually support it as well. So.
And I'd like to weigh in that council adopted our economic development incentive policy so that if we do have any tips and things that come to us, we can point to the policy and, and according. And it, it keeps our school districts whole.
Right. Yep. So, so anyhow, that's a little bit, feels like a little preaching. I hate to do that. But I just wanted to put that out there that we think way more broadly than, hey, if it's a product type, there are people that want to build it. To me, it's more a case of what's the best type of development we can do? What's the best thing that can support and, and kind of balance the growth that's happening in Plain City? And do it in a location that really checks all the boxes for how can you most easily integrate something like that into the community?
I have a question. And I know the open area next to Pastime Park.
Yes.
Is that meant to be your green space?
No. So I'm sorry, go back to the last slide and, or the, the next one back. So again, if you look at that map, everything in yellow is the developable ground. That green, it's the city property to the north. So we've got, what have we got? 58 acres. The green space to the north, it's 39 acres. So you're starting off with green space that's, I don't have the math on that. It's like 40 some percent.
2004, part of any of us.
He, he mentioned that, but I just wasn't, yes.
Yeah. So that will be the open space. Undeveloped, will not be developed or anything. That will be the open space for us.
Yep.
And that was decided back in 2004.
Yeah, to extend that then, so now let's go to the next plan. So we're already starting with 40 some acres of green space. The reality of it is you can't build this kind of, these kind of uses without having some lawn space and some green space and some shared space. So you've actually got a whole bunch more green space in addition to that 40%. Plus, there's some areas in the back where it's, it's a little hand circling. There's a few areas back there that are still, they're, they're impacted by Darby Creek. So some of them are still in Flat Plains. There's different things. So in fact, some of those areas can't have buildings in them anyway. So that just keeps ratcheting up. By the time we're done here, probably 50% of this, it will be green space preserved. So green space issue really will never be a topic here. We've had, we've actually sat down with IEP A and been through all the new Darby record overlays, those things. This plan satisfies everything that's in those overlays. I didn't want to bring all that. It's pretty detailed, but when we get to file the whole plan, we'll see all that and recognize what we did. So. So they're very much on board with this. They're pretty excited about, you know, how this all integrates out. The piece against the park, we chose to kind of pull that off the table for today because we really don't have a direct plan for that property at all today. It's just part of our, part of our deal with Wayne to take it on. There's lots of possibilities for that. You know, the idea that today it's an industrial, commercial zoning, to, to me, that's like the last thing you'd ever want to put on that property, right? There's public purpose that can be integrated into that property. And so I think we, we would look forward with more discussion with Mayor and Council about what's really the right thing to do with that, with that piece.
I see the residents that are backing up there and I just want to, that's why I wasn't sure like if it was on. But knowing forward, I, I like to have them, you know, or like really, yeah, think about that piece of property and stuff.
We, we've had conversation with some of those folks already, pretty detailed conversation. The interesting thing is some people like backing up the park and some people don't. It's, you know, it's like everything, you know, you've got, you've got all types. My wife says there's a client for everything and that's true. So I think you'll, you'll get quite a range of discussion there. We've had discussions about, about Converse Drive and it's terminus. It's kind of, like never got finished. But frankly, there's a lot of people that live back in there like it that way. There's no through traffic. And so, you know, everybody's going to have a very few. We don't control the end of that street anyway. That, there's three acres there that you see is outside our boundary. So we can't dictate any connectivity there at all and want it, want proposed to do so. There is an access point that's already on 42 that points into that property. The, I mean, in my brain, it's pretty straightforward. That ultimately should make its way into Pastime Park. There should be an entry point off 42 in Pastime Park. You know, we fully believe that's what it is. So, so I think there's lots of conversations to be had relative to that parcel. So we're, we're not getting locked into anything today. We'd like the city input first and kind of roll out from that.
And so everyone else did that, that second parcel, it's all one parcel. When the bypass went in, it split that parcel in half. So it is one parcel even though it's on both sides of the road. And that's why we showed that tonight because it is all in one. So a rezoning of this property would include that parcel as well, because it's the same parcel.
And then that goofy little triangle thing that's right there, that's the piece I was talking about. So again, just in the last couple of days, we've actually seen, surprisingly, it was in 2015. Was that long ago? There's a deed from the city back to Wayne for that place. So that kind of cleared that out. The auditor hasn't figured it out. I don't, I'm not sure anybody's paid property tax on that for a while. So that probably got cleared up in that closing. So.
That was definitely before any of our, our time.
There is a little piece of public works involved here to be able to actually get around all those kind of outlots and commercial uses because we're, you're going to be limited on 42 with how many access points you can have. I don't think anyway, ODOT's not going to allow any direct drive accesses and we wouldn't want to. It's also, there's a big drop off from 42. So it's interesting, there's a tree line there that kind of runs along the ditch line that is pretty mature now. We see keeping all of that. So that's again, that's why we don't see this place for drive-by retail. It's, it's just not what it should be meant for. But that creates a really good kind of transition from the, you know, the traffic street to kind of more residential uses. So, so our, our ask today is just to say, are we at a, are we kind of in a place where sort of there's a lot of areas to go yet? But to move from this fixed zoning that's on this property today into more mixed-use collaborative PUD type approach to these, these properties.
Can you throw in a tunnel under 42?
I think in some way to get connected to the park would be super awesome. It's funny, a lot of people.
Or a slingshot, I don't know.
Yeah, a lot of people have asked that question. It's low on both sides. If you get where North Chillicothe terminates, right there, it's probably low enough to dig a tunnel under there. May not be a bad idea. ODOT will have something to say about it, sort of, because, you know, it, it's Plain City on both sides of the road. So I think you've got a little leverage to talk about what's the right thing to do.
They have, they have definitely been in favor of going under the street rather than over the street. And this, so this, when we did the 42 study, obviously this was not their one to be just studying. But ODOT is aware of projects that were coming down the pipeline. So ODOT is aware that, you know, there, there's going to be something proposed there. And just like any of the, you know, this long 42 or any of the corridors, you know, the traffic study is going to be required for, you know, for this to happen. They'll dictate and determine where and how many accesses they're going to have and traffic control devices, if there's going to be lights or, or whatever. I know Round, ODOT has plans for potential, you know, several traffic devices down through 42. So I mean, it's not going to be out of range to think that there's going to be multiple lights or even roundabouts between, you know. lights or even roundabouts between, you know, somewhere in the Plain City area on 42.
I, I know this is just a sample of apartments, but when I am at Pastime Park and I'm looking across and see, you know, I would be more in favor of two-story apartments.
And here's, here would be my answer to that. One is, it sets low, first of all. So you can't even see the first story from the park. That's one thing that happens. The other thing, it's back to what, what type of housing in terms of quality and price does the community really need? And there's, you know, costs keep going up and up and up. There is kind of a magic formula of a three-story walk-up. It's not kind of, it's like, it's a real formula in terms of what level of financing you can get, what rate you can get financed, who the ultimate buyers of these developments are, what, you know, you've got three floors under one roof from a, to get to a rent rate and have a quality product. Trying to do that anymore with a townhouse project doesn't happen. That's why you don't see townhouse projects built. The few you do see, like there's one going in, up in Delaware County right now, it's pretty large, but where this type of product might be, say, at a $1,400 a month rate, that one's over $2,000 a month. And, and it's just math. So what you're seeing is, what you should be seeing is, the folks that are doing this kind of product, and there's two or three really solid folks around town, they've gotten much better at figuring out how do they enhance the livability? How do they improve the look and feel? All those types of things, and they're doing much better job of that. Some of the folks that, you know, are really leaders in that industry, and I'm not going to name names, but there's three or four, all of those folks in my lifetime have been customers of cars. I've built their product years, years ago, and I've lived in some of their product. I wouldn't do that today, but I would live in their new product today. So I always look at this personally, I think about my own kids and what's best, and we mix that stuff together. If, if this were to head towards a direction of, hey, it had to be two-story townhouses, it's not a project. Nobody will be building that. The other thing that's happening unfortunately is Columbus has taken a really hard stance on affordability, which is good news, bad news. The bad news is, to get that to happen, they now are abating multifamily projects. So you immediately have a competitive disadvantage as a community to have the folks that are bringing the capital here to do these kind of projects come to Plain City. So it's even more, they've got an advantage on, on rental costs because they're not paying real estate tax. It's a big number on a monthly basis for an apartment. It's a big, big number. And they give a lot of that back in the rate of the, of the rental unit. So again, it's back to, you really have to figure out how to be cost-effective, still have the product, and still be able to compete with that. And, and what that also does is it elevates the level of, of household income that's probably going to live here as opposed to living on the edge of Columbus in a development that's of a new vintage, because it's going to be a lower rental rate. So if somebody really doesn't have to live in Plain City, and may not, that's not their priority, they can live on the edge of Columbus. Columbus sticks out our direction in a lot of places, and there's more coming. So down off Hadron Road and the edge of Hilliard in some parts north of Dublin, those projects are going to have a tax advantage. So it all plays in.
And so where Pastime Park is here too, just want to make sure everyone sees, sees this too. So Pastime Park, those things here. So we do have this large wooded parcel that's here, and then this is, I'm sure this will be future developed at some point someday. There's nothing that we know of coming now. But the apartments are further north along the way, so, you know, directly across the street would be more of your commercial lots.
And again, those are typically going to be one-story commercial buildings. So with that differential, that great differential there is, is at least like 10 feet, 12 feet. It's very significant. So you're just going to see kind of the tops of those buildings. And they will, they will serve to, where visually, they're going to serve to further block any height that's, that's further away from the road. And that's quite a distance back. It's, it's hard to scale this. That's actually a pretty big piece of property. I always forget it, and then you go walking, like, wow, this got a lot more depth to it than what you would normally, normally expect on this kind of development. Likewise, the assisted living, again, there's lots of different folks looking at it, they all have their own configurations, but typically, they're going to be about a three-story facility. Same thing. And there, again, there's all kinds of different images and faces. Again, working with staff with the kind of cues that are in your, your comp plan, that's why we're kind of parroting some of those images. Lots of flexibility, I think, on our part. We've talked to plenty of apartment developers about that, and they're like, hey, if we can get the configuration, we can get the mix that we need here. If we've got to change out some siding and add some trims and things like that, they're, they're on board. It's not a problem.
Have you guys done any water estimates? I mean, I know for a, a three-story nursing home, you're talking about a high density just for the sprinkler system to get enough water, plus for the apartments.
Right.
Are you going to be able to get enough water back there?
Yeah, we've been through a number of rounds so far with Randy and with the, with the new Civil Water Authority, and we've got, I've got maps and slides showing all the sequencing and the timing and the tie-ins and the current plan and the maybe plans. So we're well aware of all those things from a, I think from a water point of view, that really ties very much into what's happening on the 500 acres. So that's all in play right now, but it's weather, well, I don't think it's a weather. There will be a big connection going along 42 to get up there. Question is, what's it look like on the other end relative to a tying with Marysville and, and all that? The water folks are very aware and very driven towards putting more water in the air. We've heard that over and over and over again. They're just trying to figure out where the best place to put that. Do they do more right here in town, or they go somewhere further out where they got some elevation and backfeeds? Probably further out, I would expect, because we've got a high.
Further out, yeah.
Yep. So, no, I don't, I don't anticipate that being, being a big issue.
Yeah, those nursing homes are tough.
Yeah.
Like I said, they take a high density to me.
Yeah.
I think it's a, I think the, the mix is correct for what the area needs. I think it's got to be decent plan. I don't have any, I don't really have any notes. I think you're on the right path with it.
And just wondering, so right now it's an industrial, it's actually one of the very few industrial lots that we do have in town. Obviously, 2018, when they did the comp plan, they really envisioned where we are today and how fast we're growing. And the commercial park that is really our industrial area, what we foresee is where industrial is going to go. So this does not really fall in line with what we envisioned being industrial along 42. 42 corridors, you know, I think definitely, at least this stretch, this small part we have left here to the northern part of the town, is going to be, I would foresee more if there was going to be multifamily projects. We want them along the corridor, we want them not in neighborhoods, we want them to have to head drive through the neighborhoods. They're going to be off main corridor. So as far as the, we are doing comp plan this year, it's going to be a year-long project, so it will be coming out. It is, this will, that will no longer be industrial foreseen there. So any type of rezoning, especially to a PUD, and I mentioned to you all before, 99% of any new development countries likely going to be a PUD. So these type of uses would fall in line with what we envisioned that part 42 looking more.
Any, any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCabe.
Terrific. Thanks for hearing us out. Before we do work together.
Keep, keep that tunnel going under, under 42.
It's got to break down.
Yes. All right. The next couple items are finalizations for Derby Station. So PUD 24-8, Final Development Plan Derby Station Phase Five, Parts One, Two, Three, applicant Joe Louie with E M H and T.
So these next two, we can, we can discuss them at the same time. They do need to be voted separately. But, so this is the final stage of Derby Station. So this is phase five. This is going to be the furthest northeast corner of, of the development. So this is the final development plan and plat for those parts. This was, obviously, this started back in 2021. First house went up in the end of '22. So as far as the zoning text and everything, it's right in line exactly with where the rest of the development is. So there's not really anything that is changing. This does encompass the larger wooded area that the future trail is going to go through, one of those reserves. So it's exciting to see this, this last part of Derby Station come through. And I know Joe's not here, but we do have a representative here, in case you do have any questions for the, for the final plat, for final, final plan.
I wasn't here for the first part. Everything's the same.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing has changed. Their development tax step is approved originally, is throughout the whole development, so it is.
Can we take one lot off because my wife's friends moving in there and they're going to spend too much time at my house? X that one off.
We, we are live, Mr. Price.
That's all right.
Well, with that, I will approve PUD 24-8, Final Development Plan Derby Station Phase Five, Parts One, Two, and Three.
I'll second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
PUD 24-8 is approved. Next item, PZ-24-5, Final Plat Derby Station Phase Five, Parts One, Two, Three, applicant Joe Louie with E M H and T.
So this is just the plat that goes along with the.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, I'll second it.
Mayor Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Yes. PZ 24-5 is approved. We are now opening the public hearing for ZC-24-6. Is anybody here to speak on behalf? I will close the public hearing. And then ZC-24-6, Zoning Code Amendment, Chapter 1181 dot zero six, application procedure for Chapter 1181 planned unit development.
Yeah, so these, so these next couple, the next two are both from the PUD 1181, PUD Code that we passed early last year. Most of this is just cleanup. We found some slight errors where 45 days versus 60 days was not consistent throughout, so we changed those. We did change, let me see, I don't remember what we did here. Oh, yeah, so there was a lot of reference to the historical in the design review board, which we no longer have, so all that stuff was taken out. And then there was also a section where we, to keep it consistent, the final development plan, we did not have the, the council review on that, so that part is added to that as well. So it's really just, it's more or less cleanup, nothing really big changed in it. There was one section that, that I am proposing that we didn't really discuss before, and that is the various lot sizes. When we passed this, the idea was to mix a lot widths and not have so many consecutive together. It's, that's a tough one. That's going to be a tough one to do. We haven't ran into a problem yet, but I'm just forecasting, foreseeing what's, what's coming or what's out there. I couldn't find anybody who actually had that similar to us, so I didn't really have anything to compare it to. So I'm recommending that we take that out. We still, we still, you know, can, I think, suggest that or encourage it, but most developers, most developments are going to have their models, you know, within subareas, and the mixing of that, what I'm afraid of is going to come back to a lot of variances coming in, changing plats over, you can have to redo them when a lot sells, sells, and it's not adjacent to another lot that's the same size. I'm just, I foresee lots of problems with that section, so I'm, I'm removing, want to remove that section from, from that section. But everything else though is just more general cleanup.
It still keeps the minimum distance between.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
This is a lot with, this is where we originally talked about, yeah, so let's just say you have 60-foot lots, you couldn't have more than five other than contiguous, and you had to change a lot. That's going to be pretty tough to do. So.
Derek, explain why that will be challenging again for the developer?
So it's going to be, so let's just say, we'll use, you know, Derby Station, for example. So they have different subareas that they have certain models in, and those certain models require certain width lots. So what potentially could happen if we do not allow certain lots, you're, what's going to happen is we're going to have, let's say, five different submodels together, and then we're going to have an oddball model that's going to be stuck on a different sized lot, because they take, they require certain ones. Or what's going to happen is they're going to sell all the lots, and for some reason, one's going to be smaller than the other, and that lot's not going to sell, and we may, it'll be holding out, we'll have a lot that's held out a lot longer than the other ones that is going to be harder to sell.
Has that happened in any of the new subdivisions?
No. Well, no, no, we've, we've never required that, so this, we have yet to have that.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm trying, I'm heading it off before, before we have issues.
I, because I think we did the minimum because I think minimum distance between the, on the side lot line.
Yeah, we have that, so.
Is the five inches, I thought we, or five feet, excuse me, but.
It's 14 feet between houses.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so on one lot, one house could have a five-foot setback, but it has to be 14 feet, that means the next house has to be, it was going to have a larger setback. It has to be 14 feet, no matter what.
Okay.
Between homes. That part still is remaining that.
Because I think that's what we looked at with like, with fire to make sure that there's enough room in between the homes, like that you're not, that you're putting out the fire on one house, but you're not, you don't have to triage the other houses because it would.
Well, yeah, I mean, it.
Because that's the reason we came.
Well, the reason I think in the original discussion, and we had someone who's in the original discussions, I think it was more just, it was not wanting the houses close to, I don't, I think it'd be fair to say that fire would be the reason why, because, you know, there's, there's houses a lot closer.
That was an addition to it, yeah.
Yeah, so, but I think if we were looking at, okay, if it's a five foot from this, if they could be five foot from the sideline, that's 10 feet. Let's say they have three-foot landscape beds, then we're talking about two feet for a mower to go in between those lots. So the 14 feet is where we felt comfortable.
Yeah.
Having that amount of green space between landscape beds and things like that. I, I think it was to, it's when we're looking at the density, when we're looking at what can we do to take away the, at least the appearance of it being too dense, keeping those houses.
Or even like so many of the same product next to each other.
Yeah, well, mostly, and 99% won't have the same model, or at least the same colors next to each other. Now, we do still have in there the offset, we're, we're trying to get that visual when you're looking down the street, that it's not wall-to-wall. So they do have to vary still within five feet, so they can't be, you know, front porch lined all the way down. So that's still remaining, that's, that's totally doable. Yes, the other one that I foresee is having to be hard to follow up with.
Nobody's got any questions? I can make a motion to approve ZC 24-6?
I'll second.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mayor Farnum?
Yes.
Yes.
ZC-24-6 is approved. I will now open the public hearing for ZC-24-7. Is anybody here to speak?
No.
I will now close the public hearing.
So this is, this is just another section of what we just discussed, it's one of the, the cleanups. I can't mess those two together, so this is just, this has to be a phase correction and.
What about the last section, the protection of the natural features? It's changing quite a bit. Is that just because the, we're expecting the O E P A to have stricter regulations from here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so the new, the new, two-way lane far exceeds anything that we had in here. So all are because our new design standards and everything. So all are because our new design standards and everything, all reference to 208, so that's now our standard, which was a little.
I'll move to approve ZZ-24-7.
Second.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Derek Carden?
Yes. ZZ-24-7 is approved, and I'll open the public hearing for ZZ-24-8. I will close the public hearing for ZZ-24-8. And this is ZZ-24-8 is Zoning Code Amendment, Chapter 1194, Mobile Vendors, adding a new chapter to Part 11 of the Planning and Zoning Code.
So this is an entire new chapter, we currently do not regulate, have regulations of mobile food trucks, food trucks, food vendors, those type of mobile vendors. Now, I'm speaking of zoning is on property, so this is on private property or a public property, this isn't right of way. So those have different regulations, and those are governed through Chapter Five, or Chapter Seven with the Police Department. This is food trucks that are wanting to operate, obviously, these are only in commercial zoning districts. But let's say a food truck wants to operate on another business's parking lot. This is going to regulate basically how long they can be there, make sure that they're not taking away parking space that's required for the existing business there. We don't have any of that right now, so this is, this is starting the grounds, this is moving forward how we're doing it. Mobile vendors are temporary businesses, they're not permanent, they're not meant to be permanent. And now, we don't have that problem here, but there are other problems where, where food vendors have been parked in a certain spot for years and years and years. At that point, I would hope they would want to become permanent vendors or permanent businesses. So not having anything, I think this is not, I've reviewed a lot of the surrounding communities, I went to Dayton Cincinnati area as well, just to see what everyone's doing. This was a happy medium, it wasn't too stringent, it wasn't too lenient. But I think it's, it's fair, especially fair, you know, we don't have a whole lot of commercial right now, so they are kind of limited to where they could go. But this is, does have just some, some regs to help control those.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
One was kind of for you guys, there's no, in the application, there's no mention of like any of the fire suppression or any of the health inspections, like we're not, or require them to submit.
Well, they have to submit their certification, they do have to require.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, to meet application requirements.
Local and state licenses, certificates and permits.
Okay, I missed it, so, that was my main question, it was like.
Yeah, I was looking for that.
Any of their stuff.
I was looking for that and found it, yeah.
Because like the fire protection, I know those food trucks never get their hood system done until somebody pops in and busts them, and same thing with their extinguishers, they're empty all the time. So having some sort of, adding those, like is there fire protection on the application? Attach your inspection report, same thing with the extinguishers, because these guys don't have time to go enforce it, right? So having that on the front end, just having them submit their reports is a simple thing, they should have them. And then why did we limit it to one on a property at a time? Like, my, my thought, I was thinking if like a business wanted to have an opening or something like that, have a Little Lee's and a Schmitz or something like that, why one or?
So there, so I think when we're talking about an event, I think that would be, that would not, it would fall as far as zoning wise setbacks and all this, I think that would still be the same. But I think until we opened it, there was one time event where there's going to be food truck related, we don't want to discourage by law.
Sure.
And we don't have, you know, I think we only have maybe one or two that's around town now. I have been getting lots of inquiries though here this year, leading up to the season coming up, folks wanting to relocate here.
Get cousin mains out here.
So, yeah, so it is, we just need to have something there. And when you look at most of our commercial properties and our existing ones that we have, we don't have a lot that have room for multiple trucks. But for special events, those we could, those are, would be a little separate, it's just going to be a case by case if they have room, as long as they're not taking away from the residents or the existing.
How would you handle a special event then, if you have this in the code?
Yeah, so if you look at it, in that code, there is, there is, when it talks to special, because there's two different types of events, there's a seasonal one and then that, that special one.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, there's a seasonal one. Yeah, so, so this, this, and we, we can add a little more definition to that, so that's special event mobile. So that'd be more of your one timers that come into town that are not going to be here, so I put a little more definition that that one could be. But like I said, there's not many locations where that's going to happen.
I was just thinking forward, you know, with all of the new things coming, and that's probably have more potential.
Yeah, even if they wanted like, I mean, I see that no portable tencent can, I understand if it's going to be a long-term thing, but for a short term with rain or something, it's essential for a food truck to be able to stay open if they have. Even just a canopy to cover people as they're ordering food, waiting on their food.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, probably like a tent or anything like.
Yeah, no, I mean, they can use their, if it's part of the, the, you know, the fixture itself, like the little canopies, most of them do have that. But the pop-up, I've been in communities where these things, where the food trucks have tables, chairs, and they have tents and stuff set up everywhere. At that point, where you're a restaurant, and you're doing that, but I don't think that was the.
Yeah, I mean, in my head, I'm thinking of, like, we just, we do our work, we have a couple of office parties a year where we'll have one or two food trucks, and we will have a tent and 50 chairs out front to have like a.
Sure.
Just a gathering for our employees and stuff like that.
So the first part of that is for private events, private events that are not open to the public, do not follow this. So like if you're a corporation, you're hosting a party, they still have to meet the zoning setbacks, but you do not even have to get permission for that. If it's not open to the public, open for the public is operating a business, so that, they would not follow this category.
Okay, so a max of four hours, that's pretty typical.
Uh, yeah, so I've seen a couple of different ones. I look back and forth on that one a little bit, I mean, if you look at. I don't anticipate, or I wouldn't imagine a truck coming in all day, I mean, most of them are pretty specialized, they do lunch, or they do breakfast, or they do coffee, or they do drinks. I was just trying to find that happy medium where it's not too short, but it's not all day.
Sure, I'd probably make it six, but four is probably okay, I mean, I don't know if you can at least have an extension, or you know what I mean, or?
Yeah. Yeah, so we can do that, we could add.
Like, if you just try to cover, like, you get here a little bit before lunch, and you're trying to cover the early dinner crowd, like 11 to 5, there's plenty of time to be on a space or something, but.
Yeah, because I think, I think Rocky Mountain, they're like open like, what, six? Six to noon, I think, and so.
Yeah, that's, we just got to hear, because, you know. Opening those up, they're starting to turn into a permanent business, they're open too long, it's just, you know, I don't want to discourage them.
Right.
But I also don't want them to become a permanent fixture in that property as well. So we can kick that around. We don't have to, we don't have to prove this tonight, so if you, if you guys like to see those, let me make those changes and operate that next month, and we can take a look at that. So, yeah, if you guys can get one of those.
The only other discussion I thought we should have is the number of times a year. Is that the right number, I don't have a direct answer, but it's the right number, seemed low, for like I said, some like the coffee places out there quite a bit.
Are you talking about for the, for the special event or for the seasonal event?
Seasonal events or.
The seasonal bits, one of them had a timeframe, the dates that range, and the seasonal, or the temporary permit, or the one-time permits are good, you can have up to three of those. Are we talking about the length?
The length or frequency, I don't know, just, I guess.
Well.
How do you end up where you're at, yeah.
So that's, this, what's that time range I have on there, I have, is it eight months, nine months?
April 1 through November 30th.
Okay, so if we're stretching that tomorrow, if, or too much, I mean, we're almost permanent business to all year round. So that's where, I think this was generous enough where, you know, our winters typically, who knows, you know, our falls go a lot later. Sometimes our winters drag out a little bit too long, so we need, we need something there.
Yeah, I'm with you, I don't, I wasn't saying it was wrong, I was just.
Let me ask you about that seasonal mobile vendor, so in essence, if I get this permit, I can stop from April 1st and then break down November 30th?
No, so inherently, it is, it can't be perfectly partnered.
I was going to say.
It has to be removed, so it has to be some type of mobile, it can't be set up unless there.
So, how does that work, like, I mean, is this something they come in in the morning and they leave, because I don't understand.
They come and go every day.
Every day, four, it's either go to the four hours, six hours, whatever you decide.
Eight times?
They can do that every day.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what a food truck does.
Someone move from site side, but if they find a good spot, right, they're going to come back.
Didn't Witz leave their truck there for the whole summer?
Witz?
Witz left their truck there for the whole summer?
We didn't have any regulations.
Yeah, I was saying, like, that's what we're preventing, are we wanting to prevent that?
Also, it was requiring them to park on a hard surface, not in the yard or in the grass or anything like that.
Yeah, that's good and all.
We need to make sure this is their, where, you know, customers could come up, and they're safe, they're not in the parking aisles, you know. Most important is that they, they're not taking away from the business, now they have to get permission from, it's actually, the property owner is going to be ultimately responsible for this. So any violations that this food truck may, may cause is going to be the property owner's responsibility.
A stupid question, are there any ADA regulations for a mobile unit, because?
You know, that's, I, to be honest with you, I.
The truth is, if a human, a normal, non-ADA client folk, if you will, can get there, then there has to be a pathway for ADA compliance as well. And I don't have a handle on that.
I have gone through, I don't have any, I have not, I have not, I have not seen one single mention about.
Okay, all right, just trying to protect us in case we, if you're a certificate and someone sees.
I mean, on something like this, a temporary mobile vendor, I mean, I haven't seen anything in any other code that references ADA compliance required.
No, that's fine, I don't, I don't think there would be. And quite frankly, you can't find a spot on site except for handicap parking is, to find ADA compliant area, it's just not there.
Right.
Because you don't want that flat everywhere.
If you're going to do that, you would have to have a designated spot for.
You will, in fact, so I just wanted to ask a question, just liability purposes. Those ADA police are out there, all those lawyers are coming everywhere looking for ADA issues, sorry. No offense lawyers, it's just, it's a business for them.
I, I will motion to postpone ZZ-24-8 to the February meeting. Sir, second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Derek Carden?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
So we currently, council has put more point on food trucks.
Okay.
So now, existing ones that are, that have been here, that are operating now, they're fine, but they're not accepting any new applications for new food trucks until this is done. So I'll have this wrapped up for February, and February we'll take a look at that, and then when the council goes, so.
What was the permit fee, I mean, I was one question I was going to ask.
So there's not one in code, so council will just figure out what that fee is. I don't want to make it crazy, to be honest with you, I have seen everything from the day permits being $50, season permits, I've seen as much as $700, I have not seen anything like that. To be honest with you, I'm thinking probably around $250 for the season and probably $50.
That's what I was thinking, $50, $75, you don't discourage them, people like them, people in the community, they bring people together, it's a good thing if they're in the right spots and people can get to them.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're trending, I mean, they're, they're coming, you know, so, and I would love to, I'd love to see a food truck rather say, actually start having those type of events, you know, so. Future maybe we can have a place to do that.
Going into our discussion items, I know we had Mr. Lafayette.
Yes.
His time.
Yeah, he was late.
You like, yes.
Late.
But we're going back to, back to your, yes.
Yeah, Colin, I sent you the PowerPoint, if you just pop it up. It's not going to be long.
PowerPoint, it's seven o'clock.
There's only.
I know, I was like, we are great.
I cut it back to 37 slides.
Where's the coffee truck?
I got it, it's like six slides, I'll move quickly. So this is just a little something, I think, you know, again, I don't think I've done it that often with boards and committees, but we're going to start doing it. Just because I do it with council every year, especially whenever we have a large turnover, we have three or four new council members. You know, we need to kind of, I guess, I've been, I've been here for 12 years now, I think. And we have to, I don't want to call it orientation, but it's kind of on those lines. I've never done it with you guys, and I kind of feel bad about it because I should have. So while Colin is pulling that up. You know, it's, part of it is just like a basic civics lesson, you know, the village operates just like your general assembly, just like your Congress, hopefully better, I think we do, we do very good. We do, far better than anybody else. But I will say that, you know, what we have, what you have to keep in mind is we have a legislative and an executive branch. And in our government, the way it's structured in Plain City, the elected officials, we have the mayor that's elected, we have the legislative branch, which is the village council. They are the, they write, they write the policy. You always hear people say, well, I think that's bad public policy, or this, you know, this is against public policy, we should have a policy. Policies are not just like something we scribbled on a piece of paper and agreed to. Public policy technically is the law that you have adopted. The public policy of the state of Ohio is founding the codified, or, you know, the Ohio Revised Code. The Ohio Revised Code is the public policy of the state of Ohio. And in Plain City, our public policy is our ordinances. And so, yeah, I got that popped up there, so you have the legislative branch, they set the policy. Not only do they set the policy, but they enact the laws. When you guys are making a recommendation on a zoning change, or taking agricultural land and changing it into a PUD, and you make a recommendation for that. When council votes to approve your recommendation, they have now made law, that is now the policy of the state, or the policy of the village of Plain City, that that parcel is now. Yeah, protected under, you know, under different codes, you know, under different regulations. And then you have the administrator and staff, you know, Haley Lupton's the administrator, you know, Derek's the planner, Jason's economic development, you know, we have the administration. Their job is to execute on the policy, that's their job, their job is like, whatever council told us to do, we've got to go, you know, follow through in that policy and reach those objectives. So there's not just a codified of policies, but then you also have. You have your. Like comprehensive plans and things of that nature, directives that they take based on a collective agreement of the elected officials, which are the council members. And so, you know, the elected officials, they set the village policy, the ordinances, the policies, we do have policies that are adopted. Policies of council and how they manage their affairs during handling council meetings, other policies of how we regulate staff and employment handbooks and things like that. And then the comprehensive plan, and I throw the comprehensive plan in here because that's what's relevant to you guys on the zoning side. And again, village staff executes on that policy. And you go ahead and move to the next one, so the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are, granted, this is, this is a small section in our charter that basically says that you guys are authorized to do whatever legislation the council passes, so long as it's not in violation of state law. Or not in contradiction with 113902, which are the designated law, that's the law that was adopted that designates what your authority is as a planning and zoning commission member. So, you know, you review preliminary final plats. You initiate and review zoning amendments to the zoning map, initiate rezoning applications, initiate including, inclusion of annexed territories. So when you have a development that comes in, and you're saying, hey, you know, you're going to develop an outside our border, you're going to have to annex in. As part of the policy of the village is we don't extend services beyond our annexed territory, so you have to annex in if you want to get our services and be part of the village and receive our services. So you start that process because the application first comes to you. You review the final development plans, your job is to basically review the proposals that come in, and make sure they fit in and follow either our ordinances. You know, when we have a new development that comes in and we have setback requirements, and you know, you know, all of the millions of things that goes into a development plan, you guys are there as the oversight to make sure we're checking the boxes and that they're following what they're supposed to. And in certain circumstances, you have the ability to accept divergences, or, you know, they, you can be called variances or divergences. So we have certain regulations that say, okay, you know, we have to have houses 15 feet apart from each other. But, you know, when we have these development plans, there are some times that there are things that are very beneficial to the village. You know, if they say, hey, like we talked about, if Dwight was standing here and said, okay, I'm going to build a tunnel under 42 for you guys. But I'm going to need a little tighter density, because that's going to cost me more money, and I got to make, I got to have another building that I can fit in on this parcel. Okay, that might be a divergence from what we would normally accept under our plan, but having that connectability from that over to our park and to our other land. But having that connectability from that over to our park and to our other land, that makes sense. And so you can grant a divergence where it's appropriate. You can go on to the next one. I told you I'd be quick, I'm moving through it. This slide I basically ripped off from the one that I give to council every year. Cause this is the worst one, and, and like, I don't want anybody to take offense to it, but every time we have a new elected council member. We inevitably run into issues where they're not familiar with the job and the duties, and again, and Harvey for me, like, I've been here next to Renee and Dale, I've been here the longest now. So, I never thought I'd say that, but here I am. But every time a new council member comes in, we end up in a situation where, and I'll use an example that goes way back in time, and it created some problem back then. But we had a resident that had lateral line that was broken, wasn't working, there was sanitary lateral line. New council member talks to the, the resident is upset and talks to their council member, because that's who they talk to. I elected you, I want you to hear what I've got to say, and I want you to help me. Tells the council member, the council member says, we'll take care of that, we'll fix that for you. Next thing you know, like, that resident is like, okay, goes down to the administrator and says, I want you to fix my lateral line, lateral line. The council member, the, the administrator is like, you know, we don't fix lateral lines. What do you mean you don't? I was just told by the council member, your job's to fix it, you gotta fix it. He's like, we don't do that, that, that's your line. We fix main lines. We install main lines, we fix main lines, lateral lines are your problem. Well, naturally, next council meeting, the resident is very upset, and understandably, it's told one thing by a council member, told another thing by an administrator, we get conflicts. And so, council, you know, I have to tell council all the time, if somebody comes to you and complains about a service or something that we do. You know, particularly with utilities, or plowing the roads, or whatever, your job absolutely is to hear the feedback of the residents, and whether they think you're operating the village properly. And then you direct that to the department head, because that's the administration. Their job is to execute on your policy. But if we have a policy that says we don't replace lateral lines, you can't change that unilaterally. That's something that's a legislative act that has to be done. So, we have those situations. Then sometimes, you know, on the flip side, we've had it years, over years past, again, I'm not gonna pick on county, you know, the staff here, because we've, we've got. In the twelve years that I've been here, this is the most efficient, best running between legislature and staff and, um, and smart people knowing what they're doing. Matter of fact, it's kind of putting me out of business. Back in the day, I was the person that would have to draft absolutely everything that you guys saw. I would draft all the resolutions, I would draft amendments to the development plans, I would draft the, the proposed legislative changes that Derek showed you today, I would've drafted every bit of that. And you would've had to pay for me to do it. And that's not efficient for you guys, it's frankly, it's not efficient for me, because I kinda work at a discount here for the Plain City, so I have to make it up somewhere else. That being said, you would run into situations where staff would wanna change a policy and kinda do it on their own. And they can't do that either, because that's up to council. So we'd have to tell them, stay in your lane, everybody's got their lane. So I would say that to bring to the committees and the commissions. So you have, you have, um, you know, planning and zoning, you have finance, you have parks and rec. You have everybody that are doing all these good things that help, because, you know, for legislature to be, for a six-person village council and the mayor. To be spread so thin to handle everything, they couldn't, wouldn't be able to do it, and probably do a really lousy job trying to get everything done. And so, the commissions and the committees are essential to functioning and how we function. But like, you know, again, parks and rec, personnel and finance, and planning and zoning. With the exception of one little area, but planning and zoning, you guys are advisory committees. You guys look at the policy, you enact, you act upon that policy, when you have a development plan, you make a recommendation. We like this development plan, or you work with them here, the developers, to say, we want you to change this and this and this, because we don't think it fits with our policy. Or if there's divergences that they're asking for, there's some that you can live with, some you can't, ultimately package it up, send it off to council and say, we'd like you. Our recommendation is to accept or to reject or whatever. And then when it gets to council, if they wanna change what you're recommending, because ultimately, it doesn't become anything. You can approve, you can, again, whenever you approve a development plan that comes through here, it's only a recommendation to council to approve. It's not an approval to the developer. Ultimately, council is the only one that can do it, because frankly, they're the ones that were elected to their jobs, and if people don't like it, they're the ones that are gonna unelected to their jobs if something gets passed that they don't like. So, with, you know, taking that into account, and then when you talk about BZA, BZA is kind of the outlier, because BZA is actually quasi judicial. They're not, they don't recommend anything to council, they are not appealable to council. BZA operates in its own little world. They adjudicate things. They act almost, they act actually as a judge. They determine whether or not somebody's in violation, or when somebody asks for a variance, or they ask for conditional use, and they say, no, you can't have it, that's a quasi judicial function. If those, if the applicant doesn't like the outcome, they can appeal it straight to court. So that's the only one where it doesn't flow through council, because it's quasi judicial. So when it comes to the government structure with you guys, as far as the Planning and Zoning Commission. You have to understand that as much as you've, and again, this is what everybody has to check at the door, you have to check. Your own personal preferences at the door, because ultimately, you are answerable to council. Council is the one that has set the policy. So when the council develops and is, you know, after years with our comprehensive plans. You personally may not agree with the comprehensive plan. You may think, no, we shouldn't have commercial over here, or we shouldn't have residential over here. This corridor should be that. Those are your personal preferences. And certainly, when the comprehensive plan is being considered, you guys have input in it, but ultimately, when it's adopted, it's adopted by the legislative branch, by the elected officials. And, and again, this is kind of like what I have to tell council as well. We could pass legislation, and it could be a five to one vote or a four to two vote, but at the end of the day, that's our policy. And the two people that don't like it don't get to say, I'm not gonna agree and I'm not gonna follow that policy. That policy, that law has been adopted, that's what it is. So when you have a comprehensive plan, you may not like some of the things, you might not think it's the best idea, but that's what's been adopted. That is the law of the land for the village. And so you have to follow it. Now, if you follow it, um, then you, you still have your responsibilities, make sure it's complying with the code that has been adopted and enacted by the village. So those are kind of, those are the, that's the biggest area where I always have to, and again, every level of, of the government, I have to have this conversation with. You know, both with the elected officials telling them, stop trying to do administrative work. Stop telling people that, yes, we can fix this, and I'm gonna go do this, and I'm gonna tell them to do that. No one council member has the authority to go to Haley and tell her, I want you to go snow blow, you know, somebody's driveway, or mow their lawn, or do whatever. You don't have the authority to do that. And it, it's sometimes it's hard for newly elected people to get that, because they don't. It's just, I've been living this for twelve years, I've seen just about everything at one point or another. But, once everybody is, is stays in their lanes, everything works very efficiently and very effectively. Knowing that ultimately, the answer, you know, like it or not like it, you may not like your elected officials, but they are who they are, and they are the ones that got elected, and they're the ones that make the decisions. And so you gotta follow those decisions. And so you have to follow the policy. Alright, what do we got next? Just a brief thing, cause I always have to throw this out there for ethics law, conflicts of interest. And again, I should stop. Do you guys, any questions about what I've said, talked about? Again, I'm trying to be quick, I know, I'm the one that showed up late, and I'm keeping you late, and I apologize. Conflicts of interest, you're prohibited from voting, discussing, deliberating, or formally or informally lobbying on something. So like, you can't have a situation where like, alright, technically, I'm not voting on this, and I'm not involved in it, but I know who is. And now you're affiliated with the government, you're a committee, uh, you're a planning commission. So you can't go to, um, you know, to a council member to say, hey, my wife's got this issue with, you know, she wants to buy this property over here, we need to have it rezoned. Or we need to have BZA approve a variance or whatever, hey, can you take care of this? You can't do that, because you have an interest in it. So, you know, business association, associates, family relationships, et cetera, you can't have any involvement whatsoever indirectly or directly. The thing that becomes the biggest issue, and I will tell you that I have, no offense to anybody in the Ethics Commission that's watching this. But, I have never written a letter to the Ohio Ethics Commission requesting an opinion on whether or not something is a conflict. That didn't come back with a finding that it's a conflict. Like, it always is, I'd like, because if you go back to that other one that I had there. The anything of value is such a vague, broad catch-all. And again, I don't necessarily agree with them, but, you know, depending on the issue, it's not worth litigating over it and taking it to the Supreme Court to see whether I'm right or they're right. But, I will tell you, the anything of value is a very broad interpretation of what the benefit is in your involvement that would create the conflict. So you gotta be very careful of that. So I say this just to kind of keep you in mind, like, you know, I know, um, you know. Let's say he's sitting here, and he's our village engineer, and he knows that there's gonna be some development going on, or, or somebody. You know, we've got something coming in the door that he learned only from us, but he could benefit from it. He can't go right back to his company saying, hey, we need to jump in, contact this guy. Um, and then I'll help push something through. You know, we, because it's anything of value, and he, and, you know, unfortunately, Randy is our designated, he's our, I shouldn't say unfortunate, I mean, a dollar. But you're our designated engineer, and so he can't do that either. I can't do it. You know, the number of things that I've seen come through over the years, that, yeah, if I had tons of money, I'd run out there and start buying up land and doing that, doing this, and. Or telling other people, hey, do this, you know, I can't do that, it's a conflict of interest. I'd be, you know, it's almost like insider trade. So you're gonna be very careful in those circumstances when you get involved in that stuff. And again, the only thing I can tell you is, again, the anything of value thing is very broad. If you have to ask the question of yourself, like, is this a conflict? It's probably a conflict. That being said, if you ever run into a situation where you're like, I'm not sure if I could do this, come to me, or come to the mayor, and then the mayor can ask me, you know. Again, I generally work at the pleasure of the mayor and the council. They're the ones that tell me what to do and when to do it. So typically, I'm not gonna, you know, you know, BZA member sends me a quick question out of the blue, sure, I'll answer it, but if they're saying, hey, would you take on this. Three-hour, four-hour research project to do X, Y, and Z, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, you gotta talk to council first. They're the ones that review the bill every month. But again, I would, if you have any pause, anytime you have to think, and like, is, I wonder if this is a conflict, you know, that's probably telling you enough right there. But talk to the mayor, or ask me, and then I can ask the mayor, do you want me to take a look at this? And I'd be happy to do it, because I don't, you know, again, you don't wanna. You, you're volunteering here. The last thing you wanna be is dragged into some ethnic mess that you don't need to be a part of. It's like, I'm volunteering my time, you know, I've been here, you've been here since five-thirty, I've been here since about five minutes or six. What's the next one?
Quick question on conflict of interest.
Sure.
So we here at the Planning and Zoning Commission see things early, concept plans. What if, well, fairness, I'm a civil engineer, we have civil engineering firm, and I own part of that firm. At the time this comes as a concept plan, we don't know that we're involved in the project, right? Sometimes it happens later, and all of a sudden, like, hey, we need to get a civil engineer involved. So at that point, I find out, I assume I can then abstain moving forward, but still work on the project. But I wanna ask that question, because I've been privy to this information, because I sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right.
My question is, then do I penalize my firm because I weren't, now, this is on, this is public too, right? So everyone can see it. So that's just my question, because I could see something like that happen.
Yeah, it becomes, it, it, it depends sometimes on the facts and where it is in the process, like, fir- first of all, absolutely, you would have to abstain and step away, and you wouldn't be able to communicate. You wouldn't be able to communicate with your firm on the issue. Let's say, it's not far enough from along, or it's not, uh. Typically, it would be a conflict, you know, a conflict, your firm, because if you're a partner in your firm and you benefit from your firm. It could be a conflict that would exclude your firm from being able to participate.
Let me give you an example, just to make it really easy. Dwight, I've known Dwight forever, right? He's got a sisalite facility, we do a sisalite facilities all over the place. All of a sudden, he goes, he hires a developer, or, um, architect B to design it. He's not there yet, but he asked him to design it. And they say, yeah, let me get my team together. Hey, Nick, you wanna be civil engineer for our project? Yeah, what project you talking about?
Right.
It's this one. That, that's a real situation.
Obviously, if it's this one, I'd be like, sorry, I can't do it.
And then that's where we go?
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to step out of it.
Sorry, I can't do it, the company can't do it, I have to say I can't work on the project. That's where I.
That's a trickier question.
What's that?
Yeah, it's usually the firm.
So, I can, I can look at it from, from our perspective.
Yeah.
We, we are not, we've had, I've had developers, in fact, I've had Dwight and Wayne Valentine come to me about that specific property and said. Hey, will you be part of this? I want you to design this. I said, I can't.
But you're a paid, you are a paid employee of the village.
Well, the eyes of the ethics law don't care.
Ethics doesn't care.
Yeah, ethics doesn't care.
Alright, well, I just need your clearance, so that, that helps me. Okay?
He's gone.
Cause there, we've done schools out here, we're gonna do the future schools, so anything comes here about schools, I'm out. I, I gotta abstain, and I'll just tell you that, because we're gonna work on the schools if, when it passes.
Right.
So, but that's, again, and I was honest with BZA, and told you, hey, I can't, I gotta abstain on this, because it was the downtown stuff that was gonna happen, that didn't happen.
Right.
And that's why we didn't have, that's why we didn't hear it that night. We never heard.
That's, it's a, it's a huge challenge. It does create problems. Again, uh, city of Columbus might not be as big of a problem, because they have a lot of people to draw from. Plain City, we're not as big to be able to draw on people of your experience, you know, any of your experience in education and knowledge and, and willingness to participate.
Most importantly.
Most importantly, willingness to show up.
I know, I agree.
Yeah, it's not easy to do. And so then, yeah, when you throw these ethics obstacles in there, um, it becomes a problem. Now, granted, I mean, I've seen it over the years, I, you know, I, this is part of what I do. The vast majority of what I do is litigate everything that we're talking about. I defend public entities in lawsuits on zoning and development and civil rights and ethics and things like that. So I've seen some horrible stuff, where, you know, I've seen a member that is, was actively and intentionally trying to benefit from stuff. Not here, you know, another, one of the other eighty-eight counties that I've been in. But, yeah, I mean, it's, there are, there's reasons for it to be there, because there are bad actors.
I, I guess we gotta take it one step forward, we're a hundred and sixty-person firm with six offices. Some of our offices does work up here. Is that, again, I, I hear about it, right? Someone from Westchester, Ohio, our, our headquarters says, yeah, we just got this project in Plain City. But I had heard the conflict. I didn't say anything, ethically, I, this question, I gotta know, because I'm really afraid this can happen. We've already looked at two projects in Plain City with developers that didn't happen, never got to this stage. And I can personally not talk about the stuff we do here, but again, it's public information.
Yeah, I mean, again, the, the best policy would be to, to, the firm would be disqualified. At a, at the minimum of minimums, you would be disqualified from participating, obviously, you would. It might be something worth me looking further into.
And I'll take it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, well, yeah, case by case, certainly let the mayor know and let me know, and then we'll, we'll take a look at it in case by case.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, again, we're, you know, we don't wanna lose somebody of your experience from the commission. By the same token, we don't wanna, I don't want you to go to jail, because you know what? These are felonies.
That's what my bucket list is. Really high.
So, again, it's kind of. That's, that's the list of what's of anything of value, and it's not an exhaustive list by any stretch. There's some really tenuous things of value that have been found. So, but anyway, I think that's it. I, I put that together kind of briefly, just to kind of cover some high points for you guys. I'm gonna probably do the next BZA here.
Does, um, council, are, ever recommend, or is already policy to have, um, all the volunteers on the commissions. To sign an ethics every year?
We have not done that. I have, I have asked Mr. Lafayette about that, about, um, a, like, conflicts of interest forms, just to have on file and everything. You have always kind of seen us not to, but it might be something just.
Yeah, we, well, there was, there was something that we were doing. I'm trying to think of what it was. We were doing a po, there was a policy, but I think it was a broader policy than that that we were doing, but it wasn't just ethics. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I don't necessarily have a problem with the.
Just to do it, and then everybody, um, I know, because when I was on a, a nonprofit board, all of our volunteers had to sign them, just because of doing different business. So that, I, that is a good thing to bring back up, and it's not a bad, bad practice.
I don't wanna discourage people from volunteering either, but I just, you know.
Yeah, we asked on, if you have any conflicts on volunteer, on the committee forums, but just like, even just have a separate file folder. Thank you, yes, yes, thank you. We even tried to do a social, social media policy back in the day, and that, that was a no-go. Everybody wanted to.
The social media.
Free speech, I know.
That was the one I was talking about, I got blown up on that one.
Oh, yes, that, yeah. Yeah, that one was.
Would that flow into an ethics? I mean, if you did something on social media?
I think, I mean, it, it almost, the ethics thing, to me, would be kind of all-encompassing.
Very true. I'm gonna look into that. Because if you were, if you go on and, on like.
Disparaging in a way.
Yeah, disparaging the, the village, and you're either a committee member or.
The, the values, the value.
Yes.
We've been down that road, I, I've been down that road in litigation, where you have, where you have people wearing multiple hats. You, as a resident, or as a citizen of the state of Ohio, or the citizen of the United States, have every right to say, I think my government stinks, and I think their policies are garbage. But by the same token, if you're sitting on the commission, and, you know, let's put it this way, ideally, you don't want people disparaging. And again, it kind of goes back to what I was saying before, you have a four-to-two vote, that is now the policy. If you don't like it, that's fine. But, but, that's an independent individual opinion, and you've expressed your opinion, there was a vote, that is now no longer, that's not the policy, that's not what was adopted. But we've had a situation where I've had an administrative official in litigation, and the administrator did not like the particular decision of the council. And it, I won't get into all the details of it, but it, it, part of it led to council instructing the administrator to get a grant, to apply for a block grant through the county. He fills out the paperwork, does as he's told, he has been vociferous opposing this in public meetings with the council, and council says, we appreciate your comments, but we're gonna do what we wanna do, we're gonna take our vote, they did it. And they said, okay, there's your marching orders, go do this. So he went and did it, filled out the application, did everything he was supposed to do. Then separately, sent an email to each of the commissioners, telling them, do not approve this grant, because it will be misused and misspent, and blah, 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 blah. We had to litigate that issue, and it was awful. Not fun. So, yeah, you, there's always something that comes up, but ideally, you want everybody rowing in the same direction. But, but yeah, you do, you're, you're a citizen, you have a right to say whatever you want, whatever you want.
Thank you, Mr. Lafayette.
Thank you.
And with no further business, I will move to adjourn the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay.